Everyone, welcome to the board meeting. Start with a pledge. Kathy, would you lead us, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome again, everyone. Here we are back at it. And so we will start with the Google's agenda.
So, entertaining motion to approve, to approve the regular board meeting agenda for April eighteenth, twenty-two.
So, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And. Entertaining motion for approval of the regular board meeting for April fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
All in favor? Aye.
Yes, we did.
The week before break, I had to get back till seven thirty, so little time. But that weekend before break, student council held a spring dance in the cafeteria. And the week before break, we had spirit week and our first indoor pep rally since before COVID. So that was fun. I got to be co-MC. Really fun. Yeah. The Patriots team won their final regional competition of the year. Athletics won, Patriots won. We're kind of just good at everything, I guess. Spring sports are going well. The baseball team just spent a very warm week in Myrtle Beach as we froze outside today. Baseball and softball, our next game is Wednesday at home. Golf's next meet is tomorrow at home. And the first track meet of the season is in Avalon on Thursday. I'm stealing all of Mrs. Flowers' upcoming abouts right now. So sorry. Prom is on Saturday in Mount Morris. Really fun. We had table signups and song suggestions start today. There were two posters that I was walking in and I said, oh, my gosh, I forgot my posters. But one is for a lunch and learn the first Wednesday in May. I think it was with Larry Tadmore. And then the second one was the Chamber of Commerce Job Fair. The signups for that started today. I really would tell you more if I had my posters, but they're in my backpack. Mrs. Harvey's gonna be at, so that's fine. NJHS and NHS inductions are tomorrow night, six for NJHS, seven for NHS. There is also a junior class fundraiser at UHOT in Meterside tomorrow night. And then our spring concert season starts next week with band on Thursday at seven. Any questions?
Excellent.
Great job.
I'm taking a prom pictures.
I will try my best.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Chandler will be taking a prom.
Oh.
Terrible date.
Thank you.
Sam Chandler.
Oh, good. Post pictures. I have to lift someone.
All right, we'll just drop down to the next item presentations of campus construction and SCI. Gary and Ted, the Gary and Ted Show.
Thank you. I'm actually going to adopt for genius except of using my phone. I have my notes on here, so I'm just gonna lay that. Never too old to learn from the young, right?
Right.
But so we are, went back out today to bid. We have a pre-bid tomorrow. We're doing the steam and gym addition work only. This is not as we've talked, not doing the auditorium that was set aside so that we can accomplish the first bid piece of the gym steam. So. Pre-bid is tomorrow, three thirty. May third is the bid opening. Everything crossed, everything we got, I'm crossing my toes, my fingers. I know seriously, just it's the environment out there for bidding has become even more challenging and more difficult. So I'm not making, I'm not, um.
See what happens.
What's that?
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, I'm really cautious, nervously cautious. So I know my group, we are working. We put a ton of time in, found ground to get this project back out. SCI has as well. And we've been calling contractors for weeks. We're talking to contractors. We're pushing as hard as we can push to get people to bid. We have interest. Even people, I talked to Eric Calabacchio at La Chaise today, even they are interested. So we're anybody and everybody, we're pulling out all the stops to get the interest into bid this, so.
So Gary, are you seeing more interest now with some of the redesign, like the windows, the Yeah. the structural components, things like others are more, I don't want to say interest isn't the right word, but more agreement?
I mean, I'm cautiously encouraged. And it's funny you bring that up because there's, nobody has said, no, I'm not interested, or no, it's too late to bid, or no, I don't want it right now, got too much. They're all interested. And the people we've spoken to across in mechanic, electrical plumbing. We broke out two other contracts. We have a separate, which we didn't do last time. We have a separate roofing bid prime and we have a separate demo abatement prime for the gym. The way this thing was set up is that we, I hope that this is part of what's helping the conversation. As we've said to the contractors, we're not looking for you to be here this summer. All we're, we're going to focus on the gym to do the demolition and the event. We're not looking at you until September. They're relieved to hear that because as they told us, like we had work we bid last year and we had last summer's responsibilities, that also carries into this summer. So we're trying to get that off our books and get that out of the way. So yeah, we're interested because if you're telling me I don't have to be there until September, great. If you're gonna tell me I gotta be there in July, I'm not interested. And that's what we've heard consistently across the board. So cautiously optimistic.
What about things like certain skill trades? Or are they freeing up? Are they still tight?
I mean, really tight, electrical especially.
Yeah.
If anybody can promote amongst the students, they consider their trades and consider electrical. Incredible amount of work is available to them for tens of years. It's not going away.
Right.
It's incredible. Strong didn't help when they announced they're doing a $600 million expansion. That didn't help much. We're doing, there's a huge solar farm going out in Mount Morris. Yeah, 300 electricians they're calling for.
Yeah.
And they're throwing 80 hours a week out. Crazy, crazy money. So. Electrical stuff of all, HVC probably is behind that, not too far, and then plumbing. But it's just, it's just tough. It's just, my wife and I are talking about this morning, they're great quit, you know? You let a lot of people in their 70s sleep with this, this knowledge base and this skill base. It was, I don't need to work this, I don't, and that, that hurt. It really hurt.
Yeah.
We do have alternates built into this too for bid protection. And we're looking, and the finishes were simplified as well. So that helps, I think. SCI worked hard at simplifying the exterior interior finishes. Some of the outfits include finishes downstairs in the exercise room. So indoors and we, doors are expensive. A door in a school is about $3,000 to $4,000 a piece. So we've identified about 20 doors. That's a good alternate. And we worked with Aaron on that. We didn't just arbitrarily do it. Precisely. Doors, we worked with the district, we worked with Aaron to, to what could we work with, what can you live without? If that, if that can't get awarded. So we, we really felt it was necessary to put some bid protection in there regardless. Recognizing how much came out of this, we still need to protect the budget. Those things being said, I feel like we are in as, as good a spot as we could possibly be right now. And we're, we're giving three weeks to bid it, as I say, May third. And. Having a successful bid opening, we're gonna come back and ask for a bit of work right after that. We'll spend immediately the next two days vetting out contractors, getting them on board. And then I'll write a letter of invitation and I'll be coming back and asking for a moment with you to work contracts. That'll be a celebratory moment. And then it's hit the street and then we go and we start on demolition. Site work. Running. The site contractor has done an awesome job. They've hit the street. They're, they, they are, they're putting in underground drainage structures. They're putting a retaining wall in as we speak right now. That field turned out to be awesome. It's as hard as that table right there. We're driving loaded semi trucks on it. It's not deflecting even half an inch. He's doing well. He's really doing well. He, he hit this hard. And through a bunch of people, it was getting the work done. So maybe a little too fast, but they're, they're, careful what you ask for, right? Let's go. But it's all good. It's good. It definitely is good. So we've been working with the turf manufacturer. So I'm very confident that our promise will be delivered for that September first date for that turf field. So we, the district worked, we rallied our troops as soon as that contract was awarded. Got the turf manufacturer in here, got the shop drawings in, got the 80s blessing out of game lines and all that. That's usually where the tripping happens, the delay of manufacturing. Because we wanted, we want to keep that production slot we had been told that contractor gave us and we hit that. So Cindy and Ken, to their credit, we all sat down and did the, worked through that and got that small approved. And it's ordered, so I think we're in a good spot there, very good spot.
Great. Excellent.
Maybe just one point, if I could just clarify one thing. You mentioned, I think you used the word, you put aside the, the arts and auditory.
For now.
Yeah, for now.
Yes, no, for now.
It's kind of deferred, but until we know it will work.
Right, that's right.
When will that come back up? I was gonna ask that question. When will it come back up? I mean, we appreciate the work and everything so far, but will that come back up once?
We looked at August last time. We, we came before you and talked about doing that in the fall early. You know, the August, September window, because it would still be done during this project timeline. So we would do it next year. So that's where we were looking at, was to put that back out in August. In September, in that window. And then still do the work over the winter and into the spring. So you still have it in time for when this whole project is finished. Does that help?
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Tell you taking the night off, right?
I didn't know if there'd be any, you know, searing questions on my way.
Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, you did your work. Yeah. I mean, from the last meeting, we took all the BE items, remember? And just incorporated this, every single one, like Gary said, we tried to work with them to get them as, as efficient as possible for the contractors to bid. So that was the goal. Yeah, I, I mean, I ultimately think that, what do you know, what, what the numbers come in. And we have an idea of what is available. I'll use that loosely. Then we can look at some of those other, other items that we've kind of set aside and figure out how we.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's, it's a complicated process. Once you have established your drawings and had SEB approval and you offer bid. And then you have the unfortunate situation that we did. And you just really want to commend Ted and Gary for all the work that they've done. They took all those value engineering ideas. They, they developed redesign, their plans, make sure that those drawings, when they're out in the contractors' hands, are very clear, very specific. So there's no questions and that they're able to accurately fit the work in it. So just, you really want to thank the hard work that they've both put into this and their companies.
It's important that companies are actually jumping into the two bit, which is. Thanks.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Ted.
Excellent. More than welcome. Always come back. Get your invite.
Okay.
Be honest. Thank you.
Indeed. Brings us to point O two, budget presentation. Of course.
Good evening. We've had just a little bit of change. We have a state budget, but not a lot of change since you saw the budget last. I mailed out to you last week, you know, the both revenue and expense budgets. There was a couple of titles on revenue budget that have been fixed that is, you're there to now. Thank you for pointing that out. They should be good and accurate for, for your adoption this evening. So with our state budget, so there's no expense driven aid changes to their formulas. So typically in the past, our former governor always certainly changed those aids. We really didn't expect it this year. But just so you do know that there are no changes in any of those expense driven aids. We're now in year two of that three-year phase in for fully, fully implementing our foundation aid. So next year, we can be pretty comfortable that we're gonna be right near that $6,890,000 number that would get us fully aided in our foundation aid. So what has happened, I think, I think foundation aid, I know it came out of the campaign for fiscal equity in like 2007, 2008 time. And then we went into the great recession, as you recall, and we had gap elimination assessment and all of that. Well, through all of that, some districts actually received more money than they should have had foundation aid and allowed to run. Other districts didn't. So in the last couple of years, particularly this year, you're seeing some of those districts that were more hurt because they were wealthier, more hurt by the gap elimination assessment, really getting some of that money coming back to them. To us, you know, it's like $261,000. We'll see, it's a similar number next year to the sub to $6,689,000. So we kind of, again, in that not so great sweet spot, maybe the sour spot you might call it. But that's where we've, that's where we've landed. So, but be that as may, foundation aid is fully funded this year and we're gonna keep our fingers crossed for next year. The electric school, zero emission school buses are, are for real. As you can see, so from July one, 2027, right now, you're only allowed to purchase non-emission buses. And the language is quite specific. It's a bus that is propelled using a torque generated by a bus or hydrogen fuel cell that can put no pollutants into the atmosphere. And so the electric buses are, are a real thing right now. There is the opportunity for each district to request a two-year waiver from the Department of Education. So let's say, you know, we just couldn't get the infrastructure in place. We could apply for a waiver and get a waiver for up to 24 months. Right now, they're saying it's a one-time waiver up to 24 months. What a new governor may or may not be able to get passed through legislation, who knows? But right now, that's where we would be. And then by 2035, every bus, both public school and private carrier has to be an electronic or electric bus going forward. So we'll still have to see how things shake out because if we were forced to do this anytime soon, that's gonna be a real challenge for us, just trying to get the infrastructure in place. And in the, at the building, you know, you could do that relatively easily. I'm not saying it's gonna be inexpensive, but relatively easy to do that. But getting the, getting the power into the, into the site in the first place is what the Logan Ridge, yeah, and jazz. The, the grid just won't carry that right now. So we'll see what ultimately happens, what that is in the budget for the current year. And we'll see how it plays out for us. The capital outlay project, we were cautiously optimistic that that was gonna be raised from 100 to $250,000. And that did not make it into the budget. You know, the, it was in both one-house bills. You know, the prevailing wisdom would be the Department of Budget simply didn't have the money to fund that. If every district took advantage of it, the 23, 24 school year, where would the state come up with the money to pay all that? It's what, is what the prevailing wisdom is right now. So Department of Budget tried real hard to squash that. I don't know if that's true. It seems to make sense to me. I don't know if that's truly what happened or not, but it does seem to make some sense. The budget that we have put before you still does carry a $250,000 capital outlay project. So again, from a couple of weeks ago, what that means is essentially there'd be two projects. One for 100,000, it would be fully aided in the 23, four school year. And 150,000 dollar project that would be aided over 15 years like any other capital project would be aided. You know, we, we had considered a little bit, you know, what should we take that out? And ultimately where we landed is, as we all know, we have a lot of needs in the district and in the building. And so it just made sense to move that forward and just try to get more, more capital work done here.
Yeah, you know, it's really important that we do continue with that figure in our budget for future planning. Just because what we found in our unfortunate situation with our capital project is that we tried to put so many little maintenance pieces in there that just hadn't been addressed that it just kept increasing the overall number of those projects. So really these would be maintenance type items, building, items that have been identified in our building condition survey. And really just trying to be more planful in, in the maintenance of the site.
And we'll see where it goes, you know, over the coming years, you know? It's never had as much traction. The idea of moving that from 100 to $250,000 has never had as much traction as it did have this year. So who knows what may come of that in the future, but it is built into the budget. So on our proposed revenue budget, again, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We're looking at a 1.75% increase in the levy, our foundation aids going up there by that $261,000. We have a pilot increase, mostly American Rock Salt. We are increasing our appropriated fund balance by a little bit. Our foundation aid, when that first run came out in February, it was about $23,000 higher than what finished at with the final enacted legislative budget. So foundation aid went down a little bit. And so in this revenue budget, our appropriated fund balance went up by that $15,000, $20,000 of that number wise. And we're gonna, you know, again, use some reserves to balance that budget. We're gonna pull some money out of ERS, TRS, our workers' compensation reserve. And so it's similar to every other year. If, if the year goes okay, then we'll refund those reserves at the end of, the end of next year. And so this is just again, that same revenue budget, essentially that same revenue budget that we saw a couple of weeks ago. We got a little bit, we have a little bit of change there in the foundation aid. And then that is right there in your appropriated fund balance. So that, those are the revenues that we are expecting to support our expense budget. Our overall expenditure budget is, we're looking for an increase in the expenditure budget of about 2.29%. The increase of our health insurance, about 22%. On the property tax report card that is before you tonight, you'll see that CPI over the year is 4.7. We're seeing it much higher right now, but over the course of the last 12 months, they're saying it's 4.7. And to make our budget work, as you know, we try to budget all of our title salaries and all of our IDA salaries in both the general fund budget, because you never guaranteed those, right? So if you don't, you do run that risk. If you don't get those grants, you're gonna have to do something that could be rather dramatic in your budget. We don't like to do that necessarily, but given where we are with some of our ARP funds and others. And if this, if there was a year to do it, this was the year to make that, to make that work. So hopefully next year, we go back to a more traditional, what I'm gonna call more traditional. Keeping everybody budgeted in the general fund budget. And then when you do get your title and IDA grants taken some people out. So. But that's a part of the expenditure budget. In big buckets on the expenditure budget, our central services are going up by about $150,000. A lot of that is technology related purchases, just building up that, remember, we started that three-year, multi-year purchasing agreement a couple of years ago, ratcheting that up. This is the last year of that, so now we'll be at a level service or a level expenditure for those going forward. Our support staff has some salary increases in there. The program, what you're seeing coming out there by that three, almost $300,000, this again, just those title salaries coming out, title IDA salaries coming out. Transportation's only going up by a smidgen. Again, you'll remember last year, we budgeted for two runs because we weren't sure if this current school year, we were gonna have to do double trips or what have you. We didn't have to do those, so we're, if that million ninety-nine is a pretty solid number, we think. And it does allow for even further escalation of diesel fuel because we're not so convinced that that's done running, I guess I would say. We have a little bit of a decline in our debt service. And again, there is that transfer to capital that we're going up by $150,000. You know, so year over year, we're going up about $500,000. You'll see again, that benefits there for our health insurance is a pretty good driver of that, of that increase. So overall, I would say a 2.29% increase, given where we are with inflation and health insurance is, I think we're in a pretty good place. Cindy will have for you, well, for the public here in a couple of weeks, a much more detailed. I mean, you've all had the expenditure budget for a while. She'll get more into the nuts and bolts, if you will, in that whole presentation for, for the budget with that annual meeting. So is there any questions? I know you've seen this a bunch of times, but.
The foundation aid.
Yes, sir.
So I, I read somewhere that everybody was gonna get a minimum percentage. So I assume we got the minimum and no more.
I believe, I can't promise you that, but I think that's true. Yes, I think that's where we're at.
We wouldn't expect anything else.
I think we were at, in the original budget, we were at 5.25%. So now with the decrease, you know, it's probably around 5%.
You know, whatever those.
Yeah, it's pretty now.
So, and, and you have some, some districts, again, that are very wealthy, that receive big increases in their aid. And you see some very not so wealthy districts that are just kind of getting the do minimum, I guess, that.
Can the, is your emissions, emissions buses, was that part of the state budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a pass for.
Yes, and, and that's, you know, if it, yeah, because, and now because now part of law, changing that is much more challenging. Much more challenging. It's not like somebody can just wave their pen and make changes. So we'll see how that plays itself out.
So at the right time, not as too early, but I suspect we're gonna get some sort of aid, some sort of support from them.
That's a great question that people don't be, are unwilling to answer right now.
The EV buses as well as the charging.
The, the only real thing that I've seen is on the electric buses, they're looking to amortize those over 12 years as opposed to 10. But again, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but I want to say, you know, we're paying about $120-ish thousand for a bus today. So new electric buses, three times that. So, but they're gonna amortize it over two more years. I, the, the finances of this just don't.
The amortizations are.
Yeah. It, it doesn't compute to me, but in, you know, it's interesting, like to answer your questions, you're, we're not getting a lot of direction on.
Yeah, it's early, I know.
Yeah. Mostly, what they're being, what we're being told is if they're gonna be aided, they'll be aided in your transportation aid ratio. Which is, I, I would, but we need to fight that full heartedly.
Seems to be all well and good that states are here, but put it in the law that, you know, the buses have to be electric by this certain time. Credit suppliers, national grid, grid system, doesn't seem to be brought up to speed. How does one balance that system when they say you have a generator to charge it? When you have the grid system that finally owns.
I, I, that's a great question. The only thing they've really said.
Have you heard of any conversations?
Yes, there are, but they're very limited. You know, I know like one thing that we've been told is, you know, Kevin, districts may have to go back up to two and three substations and pull new, new, you know, infrastructure and actual wire from, you know, two or three substations back all the way to their, all the way to their facility. Who's paying for that? To be determined, I guess. I, I have no idea. That's why I say for us to do it at the, at the building, not that it's inconsequential, but we can manage it, right? But, you know, financially, it'd be a lift. We could, we could figure that out. It's, we have no control of what national grid does over getting power here, so I.
Our G D, N I S A, yeah, you know, the, all three suppliers, all the districts. So, same thing. You know, I mean, it's.
And I don't think.
Better and different cart before the horse.
I, I, I was just gonna say very similar. I don't think anybody is opposed to new alternative, sustainable forms of energy, right? But I do think most people would like a thoughtful, measured approach as to how we do that. And this doesn't feel like it's thoughtful or measured. And this doesn't feel like it's thoughtful or measured to me, but.
That's just my comparison, other districts are pretty small. They're looking at what, and expensive for.
Or you look at districts that are upwards of 160, 170 square miles.
Yeah.
A bus, today, an electric bus, one electric bus couldn't make some of those runs. How do they manage that? But then, to Craig's point, it is in law. So we, we are aware and in the very early stages of thinking about what does that look like for us, you know, five and seven years down the road.
So those other districts that might, you know, have the means for taxation, it's still, we're a small district, still don't have the grid. We don't, we can't take it so fast, we'll have to carry the other structures, so it's gonna be an interesting three or four years.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Just can't see those numbers in your sleep.
Those 2035. Did you say 2035?
Yes, yep. We have, right now, we have to be fully implemented, 2035, no more gas or diesel powers.
Hi.
Mrs. Flowers.
So I always, that's okay, that's okay.
I gotta get back up to speed.
That's okay. I put the rocket ship on this slide, because I always feel like, once the return from spring break, it is just a bad day after the end of the school year. And just, we have, as Regina was talking, there are lots of things to celebrate, but just between now and the end of the school year, things, things move very, very quickly. One of the things that Regina did talk about as an upcoming date is that, you know, we did have our ELA assessments, and we did do the computer-based testing again this year. We were selected, every school was selected for field testing for grades three and eight for ELA. The standalone, so what a standalone assessment is, in the actual three through eight testing, there are embedded field questions that help develop future tests. The standalone test really help, it's, they're only field questions. And so, you know, we really felt that when they were embedded, we understood, you know, that future development. You know, this is just an extra assessment for our students. We don't have a choice, they're mandatory to do, we'll do them, do our computer-based assessment again. But that is something that we will be pursuing, and you can see the dates are from May 16th to June 3rd, that we'll be doing that field testing. And we have our MAP testing. So you can see that we do our New York State assessments over two days, and that we stagger them. And we really do that because we've moved towards that computer-based testing. And just managing and making sure that we're being logged on, and all the tickets are working, you know, that's why we stagger it. And John has done a great job of managing that, and just really want to thank him. This department is, you know, it's John and Alan. We have added the, the other .6 person, but really, when it comes to these assessments and computer-based, it's a, it's a heavy lift at this department, so thank you, John.
You're welcome.
So when Ken was talking about the budget, I really just wanted to highlight what is in addition to the budget that we haven't had in the past. And we talked in previous board meetings that we will be having students that are transitioning from preschool into kindergarten, who typically would have had a BOCES placement and not a district placement. And due to Monroe 1 and Monroe 2 not accepting non-districts, we had to look at other means to provide services. At this point, GD BOCES does not have placements for these students. So we will create a classroom at 811 here in the elementary. And so obviously, to staff that will have the addition of a special education teacher, we will have a school psych intern to help with testing and counseling, behavior management. So those are additional positions in our budget. I also talked last week about the ARP federal fund, that we are utilizing that to hire elementary math academic interventions, so really helping out with those AIS, those learning loss gaps. This year, we employed both a middle school, high school, and an elementary building level substitute. We're gonna continue with that. We have found that having someone show up every day that is available to some of our classes has been very helpful. And knock on wood, we have not suffered some of the same substitute crisis that other school districts have. Now, there are days where it doesn't seem like that is as helpful. We have had days where we still are asking teachers to volunteer, or just excuse me, to cover, and then we do an MOA so that they are compensated for that coverage. But those days are definitely decreasing since we added the building level substitutes, and so we're gonna continue with that. Everyone knows that mental health is a major crisis for our students, so we are adding a school social worker with these funds. And then we will need to have a K-12 speech and language therapist. Right now, we have a .5, and that would become a full-time position to meet the needs of those new students. And then in the middle school, high school, adding a .5 literacy reading intervention. Again, really trying to meet those needs of those students in the middle school, high school, and helping them with their learning gaps. So we're just gonna keep showing this, so that, you know, when people are asking about those allocations, we're putting it out there, we're just trying to get the word out about how we're utilizing these funds and moving forward. So in regards to budget, we know that I will be doing my public budget hearing on May 3rd. It is in the large cafeteria at 6:00. We will have our linkages being mailed the first week in May. And this year, we are utilizing a different company to print our linkages. Last year, there was, you know, kind of that mishap where we were told a certain date by BOCES that we would have our linkages, and it was delayed 10 days. So we were able to contact a private company that worked overnight to get our budget linkages. And so this is far too important of a document that our community needs, they need time to have this in their house, they need time to read, digest, come, ask questions. So getting that out much earlier this year. And then obviously, we do have our budget vote on May 17th. It will be in our auditorium, and I know Sheri's been working with the Board of Elections to make sure that that is all set. We also did screening interviews today. We are in the process of our elementary principal candidate search. And very pleased, it's a very highly qualified and experienced candidate pool. And like I said, they screened 11 candidates today, and we'll move on from there. They'll make a recommendation, anywhere from five to six candidates. We'll go on to a second round of interviews on April 25th. And this will be with a large committee of 12 staff members, a community member, to really select two people that would then go on to a final interview with myself, Stephanie, and Ken. And as Regina mentioned, our baseball team was in Myrtle Beach, and I visited my game briefly on Tuesday. And just really wanna commend and thank our coaches, who gave up their own spring break to take our students down there. But also, the number of families and parents that were in attendance. It really wasn't all that different than being at a game here in Geneseo. Our fan base is pretty dedicated, and it was great to see all the parents and the siblings in attendance. And of course, you know, Mr. French drove the bus down, so we wanna thank him for, from that service too. But beautiful weather, some tough competition, I'll just say that. But, you know, a great opportunity for, for the students, so I just really wanted to point that out. And then Gary did talk about the timeline that we are putting in place for the second phase of the rebid of the gymnasium steam space. And so on April 13th, plans were available for contractors. He talked about the pre-bid walkthrough that is tomorrow. That's an opportunity for, after contractors have looked at those plans, to have questions and walk through and actually see the spaces in all actuality. And then on May 3rd, we'll have that public bid opening in the auditorium at 3:30. And, you know, at the March 22nd Board of Education meeting, you listen to the presentation from SEI Campus Construction regarding the value engineering recommendations for all areas of the capital improvement project. At that meeting, you were allowed to ask all the questions and really get the answers that you needed. In anticipation of the board's positive response at tonight's board meeting, the bids were made available on April 13th. We really had to move forward with that timeline to have the public bid opening to allow these contractors to secure contracts so that they could start their work July 1st. So this timeline was recommended both by campus and SEI. And you heard them talk about the high number of projects that are available for contractors to bid on. And it really does come down to timing, as well as the need to start and finish this project on time. So that is why we amended that timeline slightly. And at any point, if the board does not agree with moving forward with this process, it can be stopped. And you also know that you will accept or reject the bids after that bid open. So still, you know, multiple opportunities for the board to be involved in this decision-making as we move forward for the capital project.
Just to follow up with what Cindy said, I'd like to make a statement on the, on the project. I've written it down, so I, I don't mess it up, and we'll read it into the record. It goes something like this. The Board of Education is pleased with the time and effort Superintendent Flowers has put in to address the budget issues of this project. With the information provided tonight and upon the recommendation of campus construction, in SEI, we are supportive of moving forward with the recommendations and the timeline. And I thought it was important for the board to voice our support to Superintendent Flowers in the process. And as she pointed out, this could be stopped at any point, but at this point, we're very much supportive of the timeframe and the process at this stage of the game. Thank you.
Another important initiative is our strategic plan. And so we are in the survey phase of that plan. It does close on Friday. We do have over 100 responses, and we're still trying to get more. So today, I asked both Mr. Salatell and Sotora to email staff members and ask them to just encourage anybody who may not, hasn't filled out the survey to please fill it out. You know, we will have an analysis of the responses with a subcommittee on May 3rd, but really hoping that we get a lot of good information. This is going to help drive those focus groups that ultimately will drive our priority areas and goals for, for the district. So hoping that we have many, many responses from lots of different families. And then, yes, Regina did steal my upcoming events, but just again, we do have our NJHS and NHS celebration tomorrow, induction, and that is at 6:00 and 7:00. Prom is the Saturday at the Geneseo Reception Center. And then, as you said, our spring concerts start until April 28th at 7:00 is our middle school, high school band. And, and the budget vote will have our middle school, high school chorus concert and the art show. So last year, if you remember, we were unable to have our art show up. We really had to social distance, and so we're excited to have that back up. And I know our finance department is excited about having that available for families to view and see the wonderful things that our students are doing here. So that is it. Any questions?
Questions for the superintendent?
May 3rd, I just noticed my calendar, we have, you have the budget presentation, budget hearing. We had a finance committee meeting, at least in my calendar, we will cancel it. Okay. That's what I figured.
Can I clarify something else on the, the budget hearing is the 3rd, so that's for the public? And then the linkages, we're mailing it the 3rd through the 7th? Is that like a multi-day process?
No, we just don't have, we won't know, and we'll get it back from the printer. So we're hopefully, we're shooting for that Monday.
That's a window.
Right.
Oh, so that's a window. So they don't get the linkage before the hearings? What if they have questions on it? The mailing?
That's the timeline, as I told you.
It's always been followed, and we can.
So every, every budget presentation that Mr. Forster has done is available and on our website. We do have that information. We're trying to make that information as available and as transparent as possible. So, you know, maybe we move forward, looking at that timeline. I know that's pretty typical, that typically 14 to 10 days prior to the budget vote, you have that public hearing.
Yeah, I know with the strict guidelines for that. I was just wondering, like, if they get that flyer after, and then have questions, there'll be reference to the website.
No, no, if they have questions, they can call myself or Ken at any time.
The public bid opening is on May 3rd.
May 3rd. In the auditorium.
Very good. Great, thank you, thank you. And that leads us to committee reports, audit and findings.
We met prior to the last meeting, you heard from Ken where the budget is. So the stage where it's all concerned. And chair meeting on May 3rd.
No meeting on May 3rd. Okay, great. Okay, Policy Committee, we met tonight. And the good news is, we have a projected timeframe that this may end, like, maybe September or so. So we're, we're pretty pleased with it.
Well, with the. For phase one. With required policies.
The ones we, the ones we have to have. So we're, we're making heavy. Yeah. So tonight, we reviewed the fingerprint policy, which again, is largely state regulations, the Family Medical Leave Act, and we'll have the first reading on that next time. Education of Students in Temporary Housing, more familiarly known as McKinney-Bento. We'll have a first reading on that next time. And student evaluation, placement, and so forth, we'll have the first reading on that next time. These, essentially, we're already doing, but they'll be fine-tuned and updated, and we'll be good to go. Questions on any of those?
Thank you.
Thank you. GCEF.
Yep, they're still working on a project that will, soon we'll be able to share.
They're, they're working on a top-secret project, which is going to be really nice. That's all we can share, very thoughtful. Okay. So go right to the personnel.
Personnel. I'll accept a, entertain a consent motion for items 7.02 to 7.06.
Questions on any of those?
Not a question, but certainly want to recognize 7.05. Joan Hencham has been a mainstay of this district and just.
19 is right.
Yep, 19. And just, it was just the other day, I was up talking to Belle at the front booth, and a parent had come in with a question about changing schools and what needed to happen. And just watching Joan so patiently listen and answer their questions, I think she has to be one of the best listeners in our district. But she just has always been very, very good at the registrar, but also, she has been our data warehouse person, and John can tell you the wealth of knowledge that she has in that area is pretty substantial. So we have started a transition plan in looking at utilizing someone from Wayne Frigley's BOCES for that data warehouse information, but also then transition someone into that position or hiring for her position.
Okay. Okay. That'll be a tough one.
It will be a tough one.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Unanimous, thank you.
Business. Business. We'll then contain motions for items 8.02 and 8.03.
Questions on those? And if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Anyone oppose? Unanimous, thank you. Business office.
Yes. Under the business office, there's a consent motion for items. Under the business office, I'll present a consent motion for items nine point zero two, nine point one zero.
Questions on any of those? I've got one. It's, I noticed one of those donations was anonymous. Could, is it okay to accept anonymous donations? Does somebody know? Is it necessary for us to know? Somebody gave us three hundred bucks?
But it's three hundred dollars, isn't it going towards one of the specific?
Yeah.
Yeah, class twenty two. So it's, so, yeah, as long as you're happy with an anonymous donation, it just goes to the class of twenty two, and then they can spend how we see fit.
Sounds good. Anything else? Yes.
Nine point oh five on the budgetary transfer that was coming out of the health insurance, that is where there's asset.
Yes, exactly.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, aye. Anyone oppose? Unanimous, thank you.
Well, under pending issues, we have a special board meeting, just before I get into it, there is just one type of D O E S here. I think it would be C E S.
Good catch.
So under pending issues, entertain a motion for item ten point zero one, special board meeting to be held on April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. To vote on the election Bosse's board meetings and for Bosse's Bosse's.
That's that. Maybe five minute, maybe ten minute meeting. Can, thinking about, we use it at about five o'clock. Can four people make it at five o'clock next Monday for about a five-minute meeting? Let's check in his calendar. Kevin, Ken, okay. Thank you. We got two.
On the twenty.
I'm sure I can. So we have four.
I have five right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, you can also.
Thank you all. Thank you for that.
We tend to that meeting, we, the ability to do virtual meetings is is still available. That also can be, so we, that is easier.
It is easier.
Okay. Five P M. They'll send us all the codes and so.
No other good. You can adjourn the meeting at ten P M.
All in favor? Aye. No one seems to oppose. Thank you.